...kind of party that gives Sherman Oaks residents a good time while helping to support local businesses as well. Anna Marcos has the highlights from this year's Sherman Oaks Street Fair.
It calls itself LA's largest block party, and it just might be. Each year, blocks and blocks of businesses in Sherman Oaks open up the street for a big all-day party. The bash builds community spirit as well as economic activity.
This is a great fair. I've already walked several blocks, Bob, and this is what a community's all about: participation.
This year, thanks to redistricting, the area has a new council member. Councilmember Tom Labonge is no newcomer to the city, but this is his first gig as grand marshal for the event, and this is how he broke the ice.
I only dated girls from Van Nuys. I never got to date a girl from Sherman Oaks.
He may not have dated Sherman Oaks girls, but Tom Labonge is honoring its top teachers with Teacher of the Year awards.
It's a great honor, and for all the hard work that myself and all teachers do, to be recognized for our love and our passion for children.
Highland dancing, anyone? But if the Highland fling wasn't your style, how about a stress test? Plenty of businesses were marketing their wares on the sidewalk, and the kids seemed to really enjoy this Critter Corner, with everything from slow-moving tortoises to man's best friend.
Fill my heart with song and let me sing forevermore.
A little crooning as you ate your favorite meal didn't hurt, and then there was that bungee jump to help you work it off. These Sherman Oaks partiers plan to do it again next year. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The community event also helps to support local schools. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at LACityView.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
The effects of gangs' poverty and the absence of a parent have devastating effects on our kids. Thankfully, the Home and Back Police Activities League is there. By giving up just one cup a week, you can be part of making a child's dream become reality.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth, offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Sergeants, can you give me the ETAs on the other members?
Good morning, everyone. Today is Friday, December 7th. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council, our Valley version. We do not have a quorum as of yet. The council does meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. We can still proceed today. We'll start with our presentations. Mr. Englander, are you prepared to start? Okay, Mr. Englander, the floor is yours.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President. Every year, we bring the visiting Chinese scholars who are here as part of California State University Northridge Chinese Institute Exchange Program. CSUN's Chinese Institute has been leading Chinese studies programs for almost 30 years. In that time, it has hosted hundreds of Chinese scholars and arranged dozens of exchanges between China and the United States. Our good friend, Dr. Justin Z. Zhengzoo, directed of the Chinese Institute at CSUN, who will be introducing our visiting scholars. We have over 20 visiting professors from Nanjing University of Science and Technology. It is one of China's leading universities for science and engineering and is a major sister university for CSUN. Tom Labonge will tell you all about sister cities as well. We also have several visiting scholars from Shanghai Normal University, People's University affiliated Elementary School of Beijing, Bangdi Vocational and Technical College of Shanghai. They are visiting our council meeting today to learn about municipal government, transportation, urban planning, and other local issues here in Los Angeles, which I'm sure we could all learn from them as well. While here for a half a year, they are participating in leadership training, carrying out research projects, and lecturing for graduate classes in such subjects as Chinese music, economic development, public administration, and urban planning in China. The training program helps NUST facility and professors improve their teaching skills, especially in English, because NUST now offers 20 graduate-level courses and 40 undergraduate courses in English to their students. The training program helps NUST and CSUN create research and teaching collaborations. It keeps NUST facility and professors up to date on events and resources to help them learn about American culture, building relationships, getting involved in their community, and works additionally with their faculty. It also helps NUST faculty and professors recruit candidates for graduate and undergraduate programs at both CSUN and NUST. The relationship between China and the United States is one of the most important relationships existing between any two countries in the world. And at the CSUN-China Institute, we are helping to ensure a long and productive friendship between our countries. This exchange program is another example of how CSUN is a world-class university. I am proud to have CSUN and its outstanding China Studies Institute in my district, in the 12th Council District of the City of Los Angeles. I welcome our visiting Chinese scholars and thank them for coming to our country, to our city, to CSUN, and to our city council meeting here this morning. Thank you very much.
Let's give them a round of applause. And Mr. Labonge is on the cue, Mr. Englander.
Englander, thank you what you do for Cal State Northridge as a deputy for many, many years, and now as the council member. But also to the institute, which is so special. Members, as Mitch explained, these are young professionals. These are not like interns at 20-years-old at USC. These are professionals picked by their country to come and learn in the United States. And we've had many, maybe 35 or 40 members over the course of time through our office. And, Mr. President, when I went to Guangzhou to represent the city, our sister city, I came back and we had a reunion. And to see the mayors, the head prosecutors of law and justice, the police officers, all these officials came back with an education that benefited them even more. So I just wanted to stand and salute you all and congratulate you, and know that you will do big things in your country. And your country is a great country. Congratulations with the great job at the 2008 Olympics, very special that you did in Beijing, but I say xie xie. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge.
Okay, Mr. Englander, back.
Turn it over to our professor now, please.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Englander, and thank you, President, and thank you, Mr. Labonge, yeah, and Mr. Alarcon, for your very warm hospitality to our visiting professors, visiting scholars from our sister universities in China. And the China Institute at CSUN was established in 1982, very early on, with the mission to promote friendship, understanding, exchange, and collaboration between China and the United States. And over the years, we have received hundreds of visiting scholars, professors, and from China. We have also sent many of our administrators, faculty, and students to China. And then our sister universities, as represented by the scholars here today, they are also offering scholarships to our students to study in China. And we want to thank you very much for your warm hospitality and reception of our visiting scholars. And I know our visiting scholars and sister universities in China are also looking forward to welcome you, to receive you in China. And on behalf of the China Institute and our visiting scholars, we would like to also present a special present from China to you, and as represented by Mr. Englander here.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you very much.
Yes. And information about our China Institute and our visiting scholars from CSUN.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Thank you very much.
Let's give them another round of applause again. Congratulations.
And in addition, we also have, obviously, a certificate of appreciation hereby presented to Nanjing University of Science and Technology. But we also have a certificate for each one of our visiting scholars as well that you all have received this morning, so thank you very much.
Mr. Xiao is the, Dr. Xiao is the leader of the Chinese scholars here, so.
So, thank you. Thank you, everybody here. And as a visiting scholar in CSUN, so it's our pleasure to be invited to visit your city council, so thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, and again, good luck in the future to all of you. Okay, Mr. Clerk, I believe that we do have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Alarcon, Buscayeno, Cardenas, Englander, Garcia, City, Weiser, Corretes, Krikorian, Labonge, Park, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zion, Wesson, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Cardenas moves, Krikorian seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Rosendahl moves, Mr. Buscayeno seconds. Okay, now, before we move into the agenda, I do want to recognize again, twice, twice in one week, we've been visited by school board member Nury Martinez, and it's my understanding this is the area that you represent, welcome to the city council. Okay, let's go through the agenda quickly, and then, Mr. Zion, I'll call on you.
Mr. President, committee reports for items 3, 5, and 6 have been circulated and are before council for consideration. Further, there is a request from the Department of Building and Safety to continue item 1 to January 8, 2013, and a request from member to continue item 2 to January 8, 2013.
Okay, so without objection, we will do those two items. Now, do we have cards on these items?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, then let's prepare to vote. Madam Clerk, would you please open the, what, Ellen?
You can do without objection.
Okay, then without objection on all of them, let's go to the next section.
Items 3 through 6 are items for which public hearings have been held. Item 4 is an ordinance second consideration that requires 10 votes.
Okay, members, specials? None? Okay, so let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, next, Mr. Clerk.
And in that regard, item number 3 will carry over for a second read to next week, unless reconsidered later.
Okay, if you would remind me, we do anticipate Mr. Corretes should be here, which, then we can reconsider it and take it up. Okay, so now, next, is item 7 through 10?
Yes, sir. There are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have any cards?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on all items 7 through 10.
Okay, then, can we just go into the? No, we're a little early. We can't go into the special meeting. So let's go back to presentations, and I'd like to call upon Mr. Dennis Zion.
Well, it's an honor to bring forward this beautiful day in the San Fernando Valley, the representatives from the beautiful community of Canoga Park. Canoga Park, come on down. Canoga Park, 100 years young. Gene, I wasn't going to say 100 years old, 100 years young. So we have a gathering this morning from our community members, including members of Los Angeles Police Department, neighborhood council, business folks, and it's my honor and pleasure to give you a little information about Canoga Park. 100-year centennial celebration. Members of the Canoga Park Neighborhood Council, nonprofits, chamber, faith-based groups are all joining us this morning here in council. Canoga Park is a community with a rich history, formerly known as the town of Tom Labonge. What was it known as before? It was called Owen's Mouth, Tom. You missed on that one. Owen's Mouth. Tom knows everything about everything, except he didn't know that one. Founded on the southwest corner of San Fernando Valley, in the southwest corner of the San Fernando Valley, March 30th, 1912. Agricultural community producing, what did it produce, Tom Labonge?
Everything. After Owen's Valley, because of Mahalan and Catherine Mahalan lived there. If you give me my microphone, I'll send you straight.
You're done. So it produced wheat, sugar, beets, fruits, citrus, walnuts, chickens and eggs. Bill Rosendahl, chickens and eggs. And he's still producing chickens and eggs out at his residence. So in 1931, the name was changed to Canoga Park. Continued to be a small community until Pierce College was founded in the late '40s. Large aerospace firms Rockodyne, Litten Hughes Aircraft arrived in the '50s, and in the '60s, in the 1960s, the 101 freeway connected the West Valley to the city, making Canoga Park and West Hill suburbs of Los Angeles. And the 101 freeway, which we all commute, it's now the Slow Way, not the freeway, the Slow Way. Canoga Park Chamber of Commerce, one of the oldest in Los Angeles, established 1912. Mission of improving water access, agricultural needs, and transportation. 1994, the chamber merged with the West Hills Chamber. The growth, diversity, and development of Canoga Park led to it being designated an All-American City in 2005. Canoga Park, the only community in the City of Los Angeles to have that designation in the history of Los Angeles, All-American City. Now, how, any folks here go on that trip to Atlanta with me? Eugene, anybody else? That was it? Just two of us? Two remaining, okay. Well, there was a group of us that went to Atlanta, and it was a National Assembly of Cities across the country, and we didn't know what we were doing. But somehow, we won the national title, All-American City, and we're very, very proud of that in Canoga Park. First time a community in Los Angeles, and not an incorporated city, won this honor. Through the years, the chamber has championed these and other ideals to enhance the quality of life for our business community and residents. And today, Sherman Way is historic downtown Canoga Park, main street of our community. A vibrant business, social, cultural mecca, antique shops, live entertainment, music clubs, and restaurants. Street is also home to the Walk of Hearts, where bronze plaques are embedded in the sidewalk to recognize distinguished teachers, and that was all put together by Joe Andrews. Joe Andrews, Joe Andrews, who's since married and moved to another community, but we always remember, he is around? Okay, well, he did move to another community, though. I know that, because he used to walk with me. He hasn't walked with me anymore. Canoga Park in the West Hills further enhanced with two regional malls, the Westfield Topanga, which includes over 200 fashion forward shops and boutiques, extensive dining options, and cutting-edge entries into the national Nordstrom's and Target, Neiman Marcus', which opened in 2008. So you've got a Target, a Sears, a Neiman Marcus', you got it from one end of the scale to the other. As part of the centennial celebration, Canoga Park has held numerous community events and groundbreaking ceremonies. Among them, a 100-foot sandwich built in Canoga Park with hundreds of individuals in attendance, and I helped lead the building, carrying one of the 17 six-foot-long loaves of bread, where anxious volunteers were ready to build Cavaretta's famous Italian subs. And what can I can say about Cavaretta's Italian subs? We like the food, we like the prices at Cavaretta's Italian subs on Sherman Way. In May, thousands gathered for Memorial Day Parade. In June, the community welcomed much-anticipated opening of the Orange Line in Canoga Park. During the summer, hundreds gathered each Thursday night to listen to outstanding music, enjoy great gourmet food, and the outrageous walk. In the fall, the community gathered ribbon-cutting ceremony, synthetic soccer field in Landark Park, the only synthetic Landark, synthetic soccer field in my district. November, thousands gathered to celebrate Las Muertos, Dia de los Muertos. This past month, 1,000 people gathered in the community service in Canoga Park, and I want to congratulate Jose Martinez from my office for making that happen. We had 1,000 people. Candido Mares was there, and it was amazing. They gathered throughout the community, 1,000, with red shirts cleaning up the community in Canoga Park. A fantastic event. Candido, Knights of Columbus, and the great people from the church. These events show the diversity, unity, and rich culture of Canoga Park and the Third District, which I am so proud to represent as their elected official. So we do have the centennial official celebration. We do have the capsule that's been prepared. We have Gene, who is the historian for Canoga Park, and we have a beautiful resolution signed by the entire city family, recognizing this very important aspect of our great community, Canoga Park, as part of the City of Angels. And I think you're going to speak, since you're the historian.
Mr. Zion, if I could interrupt for a minute, I have a couple of members that would like to speak, so I'd like to-
You got it, Mr. President.
-go to Mr. Englander, Mitch Englander.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Zion, first of all, you look great for 100. Can we just say?
You look nice for a short man, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, this is deteriorating quickly.
Hey, but remember, we both carry guns.
I like, I like your haircut.
You'll be there soon.
I was-
You got any more?
Okay. What is this, Rowan and Martin, or Abbott and Costello? Anyway, go on, Mr. Englander, and be quiet, Mr. Zion.
Since I was actually, I was born and raised in Canoga Park, and then it was no longer Canoga Park. My, the area that I grew up in became West Hills. But Canoga Park, which holds a place really near and dear to my heart, is just such a great community of so many good people. It's great now that not only is Mr. Zion living in West Hills in my district and bringing Canoga Park here.
I'll be moving soon.
But I wanted to, it's not about a name of a community. It's about the people living in it, and what they do and what you have all done to make Canoga Park truly special is really incredible, and maintaining the character and the spirit of what it's all about. And so I wanted to thank you all for coming here and everything you continue to do to make Canoga Park one of the truly great cities in the City of Los Angeles. God bless you.
An All-American City.
Absolutely.
Let's hear it for that. Thank you, Mitch.
Mr. Labonge, followed by Mr. Garcetti.
Here we go, Mr. Historian.
No, no, one question. You forgot the most important, I think.
What's that?
When the Bell and Calabasas Creek come together, what do you get?
Water.
What river? The Los Angeles River starts at Canoga Park, which is very special. And where is the Bell and Calabasas Creek, Mr. Zion?
It's west of my home.
West of your home is right next to the great hunters of Canoga Park High School.
Canoga Park High School, that's west of my home.
I'm just teaching them there.
It's the school that has solar energy on top of it.
Mr. Garcetti.
Just want to congratulate the entire community, not only for weathering, what is it, 11 years of Dennis Zion, but also 100 years of existence, almost 12. And Canoga Park, I grew up in the valley first 17 years of my life, just down the street, and it was an amazing place to go and to see its growth. And to see, you know, here in Los Angeles, we have this collection of villages, but to see this village be praised nationally as one of the best places to be from, to work in, to live, is amazing. And whatever the controversies are from, I know the historian will set us straight, Mr. Labonge, but certainly Owen's Mouth was not the most beautiful name back then. It was seen as quite vulgar, my understanding, and so the move to change it to Canoga Park, and the post office would only, I think, do it, right, if they added Park to it? If it was just Canoga, they wouldn't change the name, was something that really set forth history. And 100 years, it's been extraordinary to see the growth of something that was just an agricultural outpost and an important stop on a railway to now being the heart of Los Angeles. So congratulations. We love Canoga Park. It is the heart of Los Angeles. It doesn't matter where the geography is, it is the heart of LA, and to me, represents the very best of it, so congratulations.
Thank you, Eric.
And again, congratulations, and now, Mr. Zion, back to you.
And I know Nora Ross is here, who's the executive director of the chamber, the Canoga Park West Hills Chamber. Why don't you come up here, since you're always trying to get more businesses to join the chamber?
I am.
There you go. Right there, the microphone.
Hi, I'm so, on behalf of the Canoga Park West Hills Chamber, thank you for the honor of celebrating our 100th anniversary. We've done a lot of things this year, and we're always looking to grow and to move forward. And so the chamber and the community has taken on a special issue this year, and we're pushing small businesses. So as the chamber and the community, the neighborhood council, CPIA, which is the Improvement Association of Main Street, Canoga Park, we are looking for the support of the city, which they do give us from the councilman's office and from the council board, to push small businesses in the San Fernando Valley and Canoga Park.
Thank you.
Good morning, councilmen, and thank you for Councilman Zion for honoring Canoga Park and making the Third District a great Third District. There's not much left to say about Canoga Park.
But you're the president, the chairman.
I serve as a president of the Canoga Park Neighborhood Council, and of course, it is an honor to live in such a community with such great history. One thing hasn't been mentioned, on behalf of the people of Canoga Park and the Canoga Park Neighborhood Council, we present the council with cupcakes that are left on your desk, and attached to it, there are three cards created by the Historical Society. They're beautiful. I hope you enjoy them, and best of all, they are made in Canoga Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've got mine right here.
It's a pleasure being here today, and Canoga Park is a very special place, and we have lots of wonderful things there, and we're always glad to see you come to visit us, because we do have a lot of events going, it seems, with Nora and a few other people. Everybody's got something that we can be doing, so come and visit us and be with us, and God bless you all.
Now, God bless you.
And just from our LAPD, Tom, you want to come up and say a couple comments, our sergeant? And Mary, I was looking for you. You're going to come up here, too.
Good morning. I've been the, been assigned to Topanga for the last three years, working Canoga Park. I'm very fortunate, I'm in charge of the Community Relations Office, and we have Senior Lead Janet Zumstein, Jose Maldonado, the whole crew of the Senior Lead Office does a great job in Canoga Park. We really appreciate it. We appreciate you being here today, and congratulations to Nora and to Gene. It's a fantastic community. Come out and visit, it's very safe, and we're there for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I know she came in a little late, but Mary, you're the one who got the idea of All-American City. Come on forward. You're the one who started it, wrote the application, and here you are.
Hi. I just want to add to all of this that I want to acknowledge our councilman, who has been our partner and true community friend for many, many- been our partner and a true community friend for many, many years. And we're very grateful. I don't, we're never going to have any...
Nobody will replace me.
Nobody will replace you. I can't imagine what we're going to do without you, but I just want to say thank you very much for your partnership and friendship to our community. And I see our board members, Miguel Fernandez here and Ron Clary, who's been a big member of our community, started the Neighborhood Council and Chamber President, and lots of people, lots of great people here. So I just want to say thank you, everybody.
And one more group, the Knights of Columbus are here. On behalf of the Knights of Columbus...
Well, we're the Knights of Columbus. Some people have, we've been around for a long time, and still people don't know who we are. But we do charity work around our community. We have a Christmas party going on tomorrow. We do scholarships for the parochial schools every year. We have track meet that we also do for their kids. And we're always trying to look to see what we can do in the community. We're very happy to have Zine as our councilman. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And it's about this great community, this vibrant community, 100 years. So come on down. And the Dia de los Muertos, which we just held, the 5K, all the wonderful things. Ron Clary, the local attorney who keeps things on the legal field going smooth, been very, very dedicated. And all the folks from Canoga Park, and thank you all for coming down today. I'm glad you got to come to the San Fernando Valley instead of going downtown for this celebration, because you avoided two hours of traffic that I have to deal with all the time. But it's a real honor, it's a real pleasure to represent Canoga Park, All-American City, and for this 100th anniversary, this celebration, it's something that we treasure. And Nora's going to keep that chamber going. Gene, you're going to keep it going, and all of you, thank you. Is anyone else who wants to speak, sir? I want to give you an opportunity before we...
Captain!
We'll just take on...
You don't have to twist arms, Mr. Zine.
No, no, I just want to give an opportunity. It's not often that you celebrate 100 years, Mr. President.
Well, you, only few people would know that, you being one.
Thank you very much.
Anyway, congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's give them a round of applause.
Canoga Park, All-American City.
Thank you for the cards.
100 years.
Thank you for the cupcakes. Okay, Mr. Clerk, I want to quickly do one quick order of business before I call on Mr. Tony Cardenas. In order to do this, we'll need to take three votes. The first vote would be to suspend the rules. So this vote, again, is on suspending the rules. Madam Clerk, if you please, open the roll.
And, Mr. President, for clarification, that would be to suspend the rules for the vote from Wednesday's meeting, Wednesday, December 5th. Item number 30, Council File 12-1764. It was, this matter was sent forth with. Accordingly, for council to reconsider this matter, it would first have to suspend the rolls.
Okay, we better find Mr. Garcetti. Oh, there he is. Okay, so let's open the roll.
I should explain what it is.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, now we vote to...
Last meeting, Council's File 12...
I thought we voted on suspension. Now we're voting on reconsideration, correct? Okay, so now we vote on reconsideration. Right, Mr. City Attorney?
That's correct, but there should be just a brief reference as to what the item was about.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, if you would give that brief reference, which I thought he gave earlier.
It was item number 30, Council File 12-64 from Wednesday. It was the parking issue from before.
Okay, now let's vote to...
Parking meter issue.
All right. Reconsider this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Now we will actually, Mr. Clerk, vote on the item, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 1 no.
Okay, now, forthwith, again. All right, now, Mr. Cardenas, for your presentations.
Mr. Cardenas, I don't deserve it. Yes, you do. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to invite to stand with me the people who are here representing Youth Speak Collective. Youth Speak Collective, Mr. Keatsman. Youth Speak Collective is a youth-driven organization founded on the idea that all young people can succeed if provided with the right opportunities. Youth Speak Collective was founded in 2005 by David Keatsman and Whitney Kasterman. They both saw a need for educational activities and community resources for the youth living in the San Fernando Valley. The program was first started with an eight-week seminar, where students learn the basics of grassroots organizing, grant-writing skills, and explore the needs of the community and how to address those needs, which resulted in creating a community garden. Since that time, Youth Speak Collective has grown exponentially and now offers 11 different programs. Here's a small flavor of the services and programming available at Youth Speak Collective. First of all, they have computer literacy services, which offer educational opportunities in graphic and web design, and a full-service computer lab. Also, the visual arts program, which teaches participants basic and street art techniques. Most of the participants end up participating in local art shows and develop murals in the community. Youth Speak Collective also offers career internship opportunities, where youth shadow professionals in banks, hospitals, veterinary offices to gain hands-on work experience. Since 2010, Youth Speak Collective has placed over 100 students in internships to gain this practical experience. Through Project Green, youth and their families learn how to grow their own gardens and how to make fresh fruits and vegetables a sustainable part of their diet. In addition, the Project Green program is responsible for converting four acres of public land into a community garden. The digital arts program gives students hands-on training to create documentaries about issues that are important to them. Graduates of this program go on to provide their services to community non-for-profits at competitive rates. At the core of Youth Speak Collective's mission is the belief that by involving youth in decisions that impact their lives, they will actively promote ownership, commitment, action, and a sense of value and pride in their communities. When this happens, you will start to see and notice a visible impact in the community. And Youth Speak Collective produces real results. Since its inception, more than 3,000 hours of community service have been contributed to the community through Youth Speak Collective. Since 2010, nine murals have been added to the community, and the youth have hosted seven art shows. These youth participants have also reaped the results in the classroom. 90% of the students involved in after-school programs at Youth Speak Collective have also raised their scholastic achievement. And while some of the surrounding high schools have dropout rates as high as 50%, the participants in Youth Speak Collective have a 95% high school completion rate. Please join me in thanking Youth Speak Collective for their dedication and bringing a renewed sense of pride to the San Fernando Valley through our youth. And also, the work of Youth Speak Collective will live on for quite some time, because they decided that the youth will be the positive change and the youth will be running Youth Speak Collective in short order. In addition to that, I'd like to give a special thanks to Councilmember Richard Alarcon. He's very fortunate to have Youth Speak Collective in his district as their headquarters, yet at the same time, he's also gone above and beyond the call of duty in making sure that he's made resources available to Youth Speak Collective so they can thrive and grow. So thank you so much, Richard, excuse me, Councilmember Alarcon, for all your tremendous support for Youth Speak Collective. So at this time, I would like to ask David Keatsman to come forward and say a few words.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you. Thanks for your support over the past six years. I think Youth Speak Collective is a testament to passionate, organized, and dedicated people growing something that they believe in. We started Youth Speak with a handful of youth with the idea that youth should have an idea of what the program should be in their community, so they identify issues, and then we design those programs around the issues. We're really thankful for everyone's support, Councilmember Alarcon, Councilmember Garcetti, Councilmember Cardenas, and the entire council over the past six years. We actually brought a couple t-shirts for every one of the councilmembers here. So Sergio, if you want to, I don't know who we give these to. But I think they're appropriate. Sergio's wearing one right here. They say "Speak Up" on the front. So we really want to encourage everyone to continue speaking up about the issues in your own communities, because without you, without the passionate supporters, without our staff, board, advisors, amazing youth behind us, we wouldn't be here. So thank you again. And I also want to introduce quickly Miguel Sanchez. He's a graduate of our program. He's been with us for five years, going through the programs. He was a past student board member at Youth Speak. And just give him a minute to say a couple things.
Well, I'd like to start off by saying, in my community of Pacoima and involving many other people, like, and such of my family, we grew up pretty much in a gang territory. I've been stabbed, I've been in gang-related material. I grew up in a very harsh town. And Youth Speak gave me an opportunity to follow my dreams. It gave me an opportunity to succeed in life. And as of these five years, I have been a part of these programs. And now I'm a graduate of high school, and I go to Woodbury University, where I follow my dreams of filmmaking. And as of forward now, I just want to, I want Youth Speak to continue. And although it might not seem big now, in the future, it will grow bigger. To me, Youth Speak has grown a big part of my heart, and I will give back to it all that I can. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas, this is so special, this organization. Mr. Buscaino has some comments, if I could, just before you finish.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Labange. You know, Mr. Cardenas, this is your last Valley Council meeting, and it's no surprise that you bring up an organization, that you're so passionate about involving kids and involving our youth in our communities. So I want to thank you, Tony, if I may, our congressman-elect, for your continued love, passion, and commitment of our youth in the city of Los Angeles. And it's evident that you, we are going to miss you. We're definitely going to miss you, but we hope this body here carries on your torch to ensure that the youth in our community are listened to and are provided with the necessary resources throughout the city of Los Angeles. And what Youth Speak has done is just incredible work in Pacoima and beyond. When you look at the numbers, you know, we look at measuring results. We can have a number of youth organizations across the city, but if they're not active and you look, if they're not doing good work, then why have them? But look at these numbers. 90% of students involved in after-school programs also raise their scholastic achievement. And while some of the surrounding high schools dropped out rates of 50%, folks that, you know, kids at Youth Speaks have a 95% high school completion rate. So we want to say thank you, God bless you, we love you for all the work that you do in the community, and thank you, Mr. Cardenas, for your continued love and support of our kids in the city. And we know now, in Washington, DC, you're going to have a larger audience, and you're going to carry on and do better work for us and for the city in DC. Thank you.
Mr. Buscaino, thank you very much. Mr. Englander.
I'm going to be in denial a little bit here, and because Mr. Buscaino just stated something that it didn't even dawn on me, that this is going to be your last Valley Council meeting. And I know next week will be one of your last meetings as well, and around the horseshoe, and how fitting truly is that you bring youth with you. You bring an army and a parade of what you stand for right behind you, what got you here, who you are and your roots. And it's Mr. Cardenas that, I think, lives every day with speak-up ability and mentality and making sure that those who are less and more vulnerable in society and less able to get anything for themselves, they've got a voice in Tony Cardenas here on the City Council, and then in the very, 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 very near future, representing us, all of us, in Congress. And you've just done an incredible job. So I wanted to speak up and make sure that my voice was heard as well in congratulating you and all the youth behind you for everything you continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Englander. Mr. Rosadal.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Tony, I tell you, you know, they've got a cliffhanger back there in DC. When you get back, you'll make sure they don't go off the cliff. That's the first big thing. You were chair of the Budget Committee in Sacramento, so you understand numbers. So you'd be a tremendous asset. But the eight years I've seen you here, you never forgot your roots, where you came from, and the way you exemplified those roots was constantly giving young people opportunities that they've never would have gotten without the kind of love, support, and encouragement that you've given them. It's really gratifying for me to see you doing it to the very end of your last meeting here in the Valley. And I know when you're in DC, a lot of those young people that have been around you are going to be part of your process back there, part of your continued relationship here. God bless you, Tony. Thanks for everything you're doing. Thank you.
And Tony, thank you, Mr. Cardenas, and your wonderful family, and all these young people. I like the young filmmaker. I like the young filmmaker, which I love his inspiration that you gave him. Mr. Alarcon.
Yes, it's my pleasure to stand up and congratulate Tony and the Youth Speak Collective. They do tremendous work in the district, and it's really not so much the projects they do, but they do phenomenal projects. The four-acre garden at Roger Jessup Park that has been maintained for at least six or seven years consistently. And in fact, one of the kids that worked on that project has been a longstanding member of my staff ever since, and I want to thank them for developing that kind of leadership. But what I was going to say is that more important than the projects they do is the people and leadership that they are building in our community with the young people that have emerged and are tremendous leaders. I also want to mention, on Tony's behalf, as a graduate of San Fernando High, and I know many of the kids from Youth Speak are students at San Fernando High or graduates soon-to-be. But I wanted, I didn't want to mention this while Mr. Zine was making his presentation, but San Fernando High has won the city championship in Division 2A football. Mr. Zine, the reason I didn't want to mention it is they beat Canoga Park in the last game, but in a long tradition of great football players, Manfred Moore, Anthony Davis, of course, Tom Labange can mention so many more. And now we have a new cadre of leaders on the field, but more importantly, in our community with the young people that are being developed by Youth Speaks. These are going to be the leaders of the future, I guarantee it. And the projects that they are completing and the improvements that they're providing to the community will be longstanding and appreciated by the community. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. I remember in 2005, 2006, first meeting David, Whitney, and the folks who were starting things up, and to see the growth of what you've become is fabulous. The Liberty Hill Foundation have raised funds and donated to Youth Speak Collective just as a private citizen, because I believe a lot in what you're doing. And the way you've been able to teach young people that stewardship is about, not just stewardship of the environment, but of yourself, is something really powerful. And when you see something grow that you've planted, and whether that be an organization that you should be very proud of, David, Myra, and everybody else who's part of it, or whether it's the individuals who actually see plants and greenery grow, that is something that stays with you always. So keep up the work. I hope you have a chance to geographically grow as well while keeping the mission. And to the young people especially, you have the courage to do it, to speak up and to speak out. Keep up the great work. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, members, for your kind words and your wonderful attention to the youth of our city. But what I want to tell these future leaders of our community and of our country is that it is this council, you and me together, we have had unanimous votes, we have a paradigm shift in the city of Los Angeles. No longer is it the most favorite preacher in the city that his or her favorite program gets funded by the city of Los Angeles. We now have a norm in this city where you have to produce. You have to be a not-for-profit that's actually getting the work done in order for the city of Los Angeles to turn over our precious dollars to you to get work done, whether it's in San Pedro or Silmar or anywhere in between. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank all of you, councilmembers. Thank you so much for your leadership and your support of making sure that we are now doing things right and more families and more youth are being served correctly and efficiently throughout the city, and we're saving lives with that.
So I want to thank you all for your leadership as well. So with that, I'd like to give this to Youth Speak Collective. It's a resolution signed by every elected official in the city of Los Angeles. Young people and the people who run Youth Speak, you've earned it. And also, I'd like to give a special shout-out to my wife, Norma. Norma's the biggest fan of Youth Speak, and she's the one that actually, I always knew about Youth Speak, but she's the one that educated me to the nth degree about all the wonderful, beautiful work that they're doing. So thank you, Norma, for your leadership and bringing them to the degree of attention that I needed to give them. So thank you and congratulations to all of you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Mr. Coretts, did you want to? Okay, thank you.
I have one more presentation.
Oh, then, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Are you bringing up your next group, Mr. Cardenas?
Yes.
I'm going to ask that we vote to reconsider item three. So on item three, if we could please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, now we'll actually vote on the item. It's an ordinance, and now we do have 12 members. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, Mr. Cardenas, the floor is, belongs to you.
Thank you. Members, this is perhaps, and I've been on the council close to 10 years now, in my opinion, this is perhaps one of the most incredible individuals that has ever been invited to be recognized by the city of Los Angeles in the entire city's history. Standing next to me is Azeem Kamisa, who was born in Kenya, Africa, and had early training in economic and finance, which led him to having a successful career in international investment banking over 35 years, with over 35 years of experience conducting business in Africa, the Middle East, Europe, and Asia. In January of 1995, Azeem committed his life to stopping violence after his 20-year-old son, Tariq, was senselessly murdered while delivering pizzas. The person who pulled the trigger was Tony Hicks, a 14-year-old gang member. This case made worldwide headlines because Tony was the first juvenile ever tried and convicted as an adult. It was through this unspeakable grief and despair that Azeem forgave Tony and founded the Tariq Kamisa Foundation in November of 1995 to break the cycle of youth violence. A month after establishing the foundation, Azeem invited Pless Felix, Tony's grandfather, the person who raised Tony, to join him in sharing their story and message of hope and forgiveness. Since then, they have reached over a half a million elementary and middle school children and over 20 million young people via video. Because of his powerful story, Azeem has become a highly respected leader and a much-sought-after speaker, having given over 400 keynote address speeches all over the world, including speaking in front of an audience of 300,000 at the Stand for Children Rally in Washington DC. Azeem has received more than 60 regional, national, and international awards, including the National Crime Victims Special Community Service Award presented by President Bill Clinton, the prestigious Search for Common Ground International Award along with Archbishop Desmond Tutu and Ted Koppel, and the Spirit of Crazy Horse Award alongside Muhammad Ali. His profound work has been featured in the New York Times, Oprah Magazine, People Magazine, Parade Magazine, Washington Post, and the USA Today, as well as on NBC's Today Show, Nightly News, CBS's Early Morning Show, and KPBS's Fresh Air. Azeem is also an award-winning author of the books Azeem's Bartle: From Murder to Forgiveness, A Father's Journey from Forgiveness to Fulfillment, and The Secrets of the Bullet-Proof Spirit: How to Bounce Back from Life's Hardest Hits. Azeem was inducted into Martin Luther King Jr.'s Board of Sponsors of Morehouse College in Atlanta, Georgia, and is the founder of the CANAI, C-A-N-E-I, restorative program. He lives in La Jolla and is the proud father of Tasrin and grandfather of Khalil and Shaheen. So today, we honor Azeem Nordin Kamisa for his unwavering commitment to teaching nonviolence and for being a true beacon of peace in the world. I think it's fitting that our wonderful, great city, that in my opinion is in a paradigm shift of respect and compassion for all human beings, immigrants, citizens, children, elderly. I think it's fitting that we honor this wonderful gentleman. And I think it's important for us to understand and get to know where his heart is and where his spirit is. Because every single one of us who have been elected at every level of government need to learn how to temper the bad side of us and somehow nurture and bring out in everything that we do, the good side of us. Every single day, I pray for my family, especially for my two teenage Latino males. Anytime my son, my 17-year-old son, has to take the bus, I fear for his life. Because at any given moment, someone can ask him, "Where are you from?" And those are the last words that he may hear. It happens too often, and it could happen at any time. I pray that that not happen to anyone. I pray for your children, I pray for all children. But for me, to be able to shake the hand of a man who has endured such a tragedy and to see and know that he has created something from that that is so beautiful and so profound. He truly is someone that should be honored in every place possible. So with that, it is my honor to bring to the podium Azeem Kamisa for his wonderful being and the beautiful person that he has become and he exudes to be every single day.
Let's give him a round of applause. And Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Cardenas, you gave me a Sacramento flashback. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Congressman Tony Cardenas, for honoring me and for your very heartfelt message. I did not do this work when my son was alive. This tragedy is almost 18-years-old next month. It was a life-changing event for me. I took the response that there were victims at both ends of the gun, that the enemy was not the 14-year-old who murdered my son, but the societal forces in our country and in our cities that forced a young African-American man to join a gang at the age of 11, and at the age of 14, he shot and killed my son to prove himself to the gang. And I figured that was the enemy. And nine months after he died, as Congressman Cardenas eloquently introduced me, I founded the Tariq Kamisa Foundation, and our mission is to stop kids from killing kids by breaking the cycle of youth violence. And we essentially have three mandates. Our first mandate is to save lives of children, because as you pointed out, we lose too many every single day. Our second mandate is to empower the right choices so kids don't end up in lives of violence and gangs and guns for all the wrong reasons. And our third mandate is to teach the principles of nonviolence, of empathy, of compassion, of forgiveness, and most importantly, of peacemaking. And I started with a very simple premise, that violence is a learned behavior. No child was born violent. But if you accept that as a truism, it follows that nonviolence can also be a learned behavior. But we have to teach it, because kids are not going to learn this through Moses. And soon after I started the foundation, I approached Pless Felix, the grandfather and guardian of my son's killer, with the attitude that we have both lost a child, my son died, and his grandson, although he was like a son to him, Tony calls him daddy, was lost to the juvenile justice system. And I told him, "I can't bring my son back from the dead. He's gone. I wish I could, but there's no way I can. And quite frankly, there's nothing you can do to get Tony out of the juvenile justice system. He's now in the hands of the juvenile justice system." And I've started this foundation with the mission to stop kids from killing kids. And I can't do this alone. So I've come to ask for your help, because the one thing you and I can do is to make sure no other child in our community ends up dead like my son or ends up in prison like your grandson. That we can do. And he was very quick to take my hand of forgiveness. And I started with $8,000 in my home office. We are in our 17th year, and with the grace of God, the work has done well. We are over 42 employees now. We are known worldwide, and I'm really excited to share with you that we are successfully keeping kids away from gangs, from guns, and from violence. There is a solution here, and there is a lot of hope here. And I'm very excited to meet you, Congressman Cardenas, and I look forward to working with you, both in LA and hopefully nationally now that you are part of US Congress, and also with the City Council. I'm very excited to share with you that I'm also founder of the CANAI program, which is in its 11th year, where we are actually taking juvenile offenders and restoring them. While the system, the recidivism rate is 85%, and the cost of incarceration is over $200,000, the CANAI program is in its 11th year. And over the last four and a half years, the cost of the CANAI program is under $20,000. This is a program I have in Georgia, and the recidivism rate over the last four and a half years is under 30%. And I'm very excited to share with you that I am bringing the CANAI program to Los Angeles in partnership with the Loyola Law School, the Center for Restorative Justice. We have Scott Wood here and Seth Weiner. Thank you. Both representing the Loyola Law School, which is part of LMU. And our other partner is the LA Urban League, and also Laura Cuffer, which is in the seat that's working in prisons. So I'm very excited and I want to share more with you about bringing this program to Los Angeles, because I truly believe that there were victims at both ends of the gun. And we must make a commitment as citizens, and as citizens of not only Los Angeles but also of the country, we must make a commitment to prevent our young kids from dying and taking our youthful offenders and restoring them and bringing them back to society as functioning and contributing member. Thank you again for this honor. I'm very touched.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
With that, I would like to give this resolution that's signed by all of the elected officials of the city of Los Angeles to Azeem Nordin Kamisa. In my life, I didn't get the opportunity to meet Martin Luther King, another renowned human being who exuded nonviolence, Cesar Chavez, Mahatma Gandhi. But I have, I have met Azeem, and I have a brother in the work that I started to do on juvenile justice many years ago, and a brother that we will, we will change millions of minds, hearts, and lives together. Thank you for being who you are and for showing the world that the heart is stronger than anything else and that the spirit is where we need to look every single moment of our lives and find ourselves and be the best that we can be. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, colleagues, I'd like to acknowledge another very special guest, Encino's own Sarah Tepper, who is doing something unusual for her bar mitzvah project. She's launched Jackets for Jersey to collect and send gently-used winter coats to New Jersey residents in need of warm clothing in the wake of Hurricane Sandy. With the help of her mother, Michelle, Sarah has gathered garments from friends, relatives, and their colleagues. Her friend Skylar Steinman and Skylar's mother Cheryl Steinman are also helping with the project, as they have relatives who live in New Jersey who can coordinate the deliveries once they arrive. Sarah and Michelle organized a drive-through collective point for items at Encino Charter Elementary that took place on Saturday, November 17th, as well as drop-off boxes at Millikan Middle School in Sherman Oaks, Portola Middle School in Tarzana, and Lenai Road Elementary School in Encino. As we enter the holidays and think about giving to others, I think the timing couldn't be more perfect to acknowledge Sarah and thank her for her great work. And now, hopefully, Sarah would like to say a few words.
Mr. Coretts, before Sarah starts, I'd like to call on Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm a Jersey boy, I want you to know. And my sister Helen was caught in that incredible cold moment. And for over 10 days, they had no heat. She has two sons and a husband, and they all huddled together through that process there. So just congratulations as a Jersey guy. I love what you just did. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Sarah Tepper. I'm 12-years-old, and I put together Jackets for Jersey. And as you've heard, it's an organization to help those in need in New Jersey who need backpacks, blankets, jackets, and shoes and other items, people who need clothing and most items that, yes. I wanted to thank my mom for helping coordinate everything, and my dad for sitting in the rain with me for six hours during a drive-through drop-off we had.
Why don't we get your parents? Get behind your daughter so that everybody can see you.
I also want to thank the rest of my family for helping me and being very supportive of this great cause. And thank you to all the people who donated, because without them, it wouldn't be possible to even be standing here. And I also want to thank Jeffrey Evanstein and Paul Coretts for inviting me today. Thank you. And to Anna King, who wrote that wonderful article in The Patch about this great cause. And without her, I wouldn't be standing here today. And right now, the jackets arrived in New Jersey yesterday, and they are being delivered to Union Beach today. And we'll hope to get some pictures, and Anna King is going to write another article in The Patch. So keep looking there, and it will give you an update. We have been getting a lot of deliveries from other people, because they haven't figured out that it ended yet. So we've been getting jackets dropped off at our house just every single day. So our garage is still full of jackets. So we are going to deliver those jackets to Skid Row on Sunday. And if you want to help out or if you want to donate a jacket, you can go to jacketsforjersey.com, and it will tell you everything you need to know, or you can contact me. So yeah, thank you.
Okay, now let's go to item seven.
That's item seven called Special for Cards.
Okay, Rick Nightingale, I saw him earlier. Rick Nightingale, Dow House Dude, and John Walsh, please come forward. Rick, the floor is yours.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. The Housing Department here, you know, for the, they come out and they check your units for things that are wrong, and they write people up and so forth. I'll have to admit, I had a real... I'll have to admit, I had a real bad situation with them a few years back and they weren't kind of understanding. They have come a long way, I'll have to admit. I just had my inspection last week and the gentleman was very polite. I had no problems. And the only thing is, is that I would like to say is that, as you know, people, Los Angeles really looks a lot better from these people coming around and checking what's going on. They have a long ways to go. I believe they're not checking for how many people live in the units. There is a law, it's been there for years and years and years and years, and they will not enforce it. The Council Hill will not let them enforce it. They tell them, no, we don't want to enforce that because that's intruding on the privacy of these people and they're poor and they got to live five and six and seven people. Why I say that? Next door upstairs, they had six adults and I think seven or eight kids living in a two-bedroom. Now you tell me how people could live like that. But getting back to the other, I think it has worked and I just hope it keeps improving. Thank you.
Mr. Dude?
I don't know what he said. We are banching people in places because we don't have affordable housing. That is my very point. And this guy says it is wrong that somebody is looking for shelter even if they have to live like cockroaches. Excuse me, sir, you happen to be a homeowner, which is a huge privilege in this stupid world that we live. Do you understand that it should not be a privilege but a right to have a place on earth? All this BS that you're going to go to heaven and you're going to be in a better place? Don't give me that BS. Nobody knows where we're going after we die. So why don't we provide a real system for everybody to have a place on earth? We can do it, we're smart enough. But we have to do away with all this prejudice and all this greed. Look at this article. The Russians are coming. These guys and his daughter, they buy houses, they buy apartments, they buy buildings from Donald Trump and those people. They'll never live in those places. But the rest of us, hey, if you're out on the street, you're a homeless bum that is worth nothing. And this guy that says that people are overcrowding apartments, where do you want them to live? On the streets? So they can be harassed by the LAPD and the Santa Monica PD and the PDPD and the DDPD and every PDD? And we're paying their salaries and they're just here to harass people that have no shelter? Let's build a different system.
Yes, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I see some students in the room. My website is PG HollywoodHighland.org. Go to signon.org and sign the anti-Viragosa. I like to say to the students, what's happening here? Because no one's talking to you. Suppose you have an apartment, you live in an apartment and the landlord doesn't keep it up and there are problems and there are rats. First, your parents go to the landlord and send him a letter. If he doesn't repair it, then they send a letter to the city. Then the city sends out an inspector. Then the inspector writes up your landlord and sends it to the landlord. If the landlord doesn't do anything, then the city fines, makes the landlord pay a lot of money. But what's worse is the city says, now on, you don't pay your rent to the landlord, you pay it to the city. And when we decide the landlord has repaired your apartment, then we will give you back the money. And I'm telling you, once the landlord loses the rent, you should see how very, very fast the landlord fixes your apartment. And that is good about... There's a lot wrong with the city, but that is very good about the city because if you don't live in the city of Los Angeles, you don't have all the protections that you have if you were a parent, if your parents are renters. Thank you. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay. No speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. Next, I want to take a couple of quick general public comment cards. I would like to have Sharon Romano and Colleen and Sam. And I'm having difficulty pronouncing the last name, so if I can get Colleen and Sam to come forward.
That's Adele and Ken.
Ms. Romano?
Thank you. My name is Sharon Romano. I'm with the Hollywood Los Angeles Beautification Team. Good morning, Council. Mr. Cardenas, four years ago, I came to meet with you and proposed a project for my nonprofit to build bioswells at the corner of Glen Oaks and Sullen Boulevard. You were concerned about the flooding hazard of that corner. You were concerned about the lost storm water. You were concerned about jobs for kids. You embraced us. You supported us. You trusted us. You secured the funding for us to implement the project. Over these last four years, we have had the most wonderful relationship with you and your staff. Over the last several years, we have been mentored and been blessed with a friendship with staff from Bureau of Sanitation, the engineers who designed the Glen Oaks project, which is currently under construction on Glen Oaks Boulevard today. Our first mentor was Department of Water and Power. Today, we are blessed also with the friendship and the pleasure of working with BOE staff. When the community gets to work with city departments, it creates a very powerful and productive team. And very powerful and productive things are happening. And this is all because of your leadership, your mentoring. Before you left for Washington, we wanted to come and thank you. Thank you on behalf of the neighborhood. Thank you for being such a strong proponent of storm water capture in the city. And thank you for your faith in HBT. We're going to miss you.
Councilman Adal Hashkili from the Bureau of Sanitation, on behalf of the city family, the city employees and workers, the 2,800 sanitation workers that work night and day, serve in the city proudly, I want to thank you for being a champion, for making our community a better place to live. This is an example of water quality. Under the leadership of the mayor and council, we're able to implement projects to improve our communities. I mean, just hearing what we heard today is just an example. And what we can do is improve the communities by employing kids into doing these things, by transforming neighborhoods into green and clean neighborhoods. And we're doing that by addressing pollution, our waterways. And this is really the future of Los Angeles, is how we can address a pollution problem and make it into something that can provide benefits across the city, all the way from the Valley to San Pedro, from northeast LA to West Side. We're doing that. And this is an example of this project. So I want to thank you for your leadership. It's hard to see an engineer leave council, but I'm looking forward to working with you at the national level. I think this is an example of, we can show the world, we can show the entire country why Los Angeles is the best in managing its issues in an integrated way through collaboration with the community, with people like Sharon Romano and the Hollywood Beautification Team. It's a great example of collaboration to meet and address our future. This is exciting time. So thank you, Councilman, on behalf of my partners in the Bureau of Engineering, Ken Redd, and the workers in sanitation engineering. Thank you for all what you've done.
Councilman Ken Redd, Bureau of Engineering, just want to add a couple of words. Thank you for your leadership. And the thing that I've enjoyed most about this, and I think it's unique that you led us to this direction, is that two bureaus, Bureau of Engineering and Bureau of Sanitation, we work together all the time. But now we've joined with a nonprofit organization. And I would just like to thank you and thank Sharon for her and her team for their involvement. This has really been a great success and, again, leading the way into looking to a different way to deliver projects for the city of Los Angeles. So thank you for your leadership.
Okay. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. Point of personal privilege, Mr. President. I want to thank you so much for all the wonderful work that you do and you give me far, far too much credit. This is something, Sharon, that you brought to this community. And bioswells, we hope and pray, will be a common household name, not only amongst our children, but of every Angelino, of every Californian, of every person throughout the world. And this project is truly a demonstration, a demonstration project, but it truly is a demonstration of what we can do, what we should do, and what we should continue to do all over this wonderful city. So, Mr. President, I want to thank you for giving them the opportunity to speak today and to show the rest of Los Angeles what we can do and what we should be doing. And again, thank you for whatever it is that I was able to do to make this project happen. But it truly was a labor of love and a commitment that you had, Sharon, that our departments embraced and that the community embraced. And thank you so much for teaching our children. Thank you so much.
Okay. Now, before Sam, I mean, Colleen and Sam come up, Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, just a shout out to Sharon Romero. You know, we went to Israel in 1996 and we bonded at that moment. And you've been an incredible leader over the years. And I just want to do a shout out to you. God bless you and it's a pleasure to see you here honoring Tony Cardenas, who certainly deserves the honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you again. Okay. Sam and Colleen or Colleen and Sam?
Good morning, Mr. President and council members. I'm Colleen Ektifayi and this is my husband, Sam. We are business owners of an electronics store that services auto parts on 11th Street. And we are here representing all the struggling business owners on the street. The street is also known for auto electronics. We are having a reoccurring problem with several illegal installers that have taken up the street for the business. They block the street with cones and EZ UPS and have taken up all the street parking so our customers have nowhere to park. They also steal our customers and have caused property damage to some of the businesses on the street. They also have stolen merchandise from the businesses. They have also ganged up on a few business owners and physically assaulted them. The police have been out there on many occasions and also police helicopters and fire department because one of these installers was brandishing a gun, which I cannot imagine the cost the city has incurred from this. The city is also losing revenue because these installers do not pay taxes. These illegal installers are also selling drugs on the street. Last year, one of these illegal installers was brutally beaten in a street fight on 11th Street and now has a lawsuit against the city of Los Angeles for the police department's delay in response to his beating. Again, this is someone who is operating an illegal business on 11th Street. We have been to the Department of Building and Safety. We've called the City of Finance. We have called 311 and the police. The police have informed these installers to quit and leave. The police said that they would be back the next day to make sure that they were not operating their illegal business. And on every occasion, they never showed back up and things continue again. Most of these men are affiliated with some gang or have a criminal record. All of the small business owners have suffered great losses and we ask that something be done immediately, such as having one or two police bike patrol, patrol the street like in other areas of downtown and installing parking meters so that they are not allowed.
Thank you. Mr. Labange, could you do me a favor and get with them, get the address and then refer them to the proper authorities and see if we can assist them? Now we'll go back into the agenda items. In fact, do we need to recess the regular meeting in order to go into the special meeting, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay. Then let's consider us recessed. If you could please call the roll.
Very good, sir. Alakon Buscaino Cardenas, Englander-Garcetti Weezer, Corrects, Kriya Labange Parks, Perry Race, Rosendahl Zion, Wesson. Excuse me, 12 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. Dollhouse Dude, Rick Nightingale, and John Walsh. We are on item 11. So you're passing on this one? Okay. Rick Nightingale, John Walsh. In fact, John, you're close. You can just go and Rick can go right after you.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or signon.com. I like to... You know, generally the students show up here for 10 minutes and they leave. These students, I've never seen students last this long in a meeting. I want you to know what this is. If you've been down and saw that big, big fountain downtown they opened in that park, you have to thank the county for that. The county made the rich people build that park for you. Now, the city council did nothing about that. They were with the developers, the multimillionaires. So I want you to... And now, this is more money for a man named Eli Broad, who is a racist, who wants them... He's getting the city to build him a parking lot for his egomaniacal museum down there, which is boring. So I want you to really understand that Gloria Molina and this county, which is different from the city, remember, it's different from the city. The county is 10 million people, the city is only 4 million. These people gave in to the rich people and you got nothing from this Grand Avenue development. The five supervisors put pressure on the developers and gave you that huge, beautiful, nice park. For shame, city council. Thank you.
Rick Nightingale, Marion Fogler, Donna Pierman.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. You know, I'll tell you, I don't know where all this money's coming from. I mean, we're supposed to be broke and we keep building more things and more things. Most time, I want to compliment though, that comes out here in the audience to talk to us about different items on this agenda would be Dennis Zion and even Richard Calon. Him and I, we go around and around, but he's a good guy. He comes out here, he talks to us, lets us know what's going on. And Joe Biesko from the 15th District, he's come out, just out here to talk to me. But my own councilperson, Mitch here, he don't talk to me.
Mr. President, he's not talking about this item?
I realize that, but it's turned around and come that I've sat for six months.
Stay... Rick, 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 just stay on the item, sir, please.
Okay.
Just stay on the item.
I just turn around and want to get information, what's going on? We're supposed to go to our councilperson that we can call and talk to to find out what's going on.
He's still not talking about the Grand Avenue project.
Yes, but the Grand Avenue is money. The Grand Avenue is the board here turns around and gives permission and gives them money. So who do you talk to? We're supposed to go to our councilperson and talk to this person about what's going on down here to give money to different things. So now what are we supposed to do? I just like somebody to tell me that, that we're supposed to come to the meeting and you people are supposed to be... You know, I appreciate you coming out in the audience, but you're supposed to be listening to different people here that speak. That's your job. We're supposed to be able to call our councilperson and ask them what's going on and what information can we do?
He is still not talking about the Grand Avenue project.
So that's what it is all about. I know, you keep going back to the Grand Avenue.
No, but that's... Mr. Nightingale, you know that you're supposed to speak to the item.
I... That's exactly right. I'm speaking to the audience and they don't probably...
No, the item, the item. But anyway, thank you. Marion Fogler, Donna Pierman, please speak on the item.
You like to squander all the money here and that's why you're bankrupting the city here with this. And I know that this has all been earmarked. I spoke on this Grand Avenue project before. I can't believe that you people are going to throw away more money down the tubes here when you're asking us that we can't have the video conferencing open here. I think this is the outrage that you continue to make Eli Broad rich, all these people rich to take away middle-class workers, their pensions. You got a chutzpah, Mr. Wesson, Mr. Mayor Antonio. You told me to my face that you were going to touch the benefits and here you're doing this Grand Avenue project? What a chutzpah. This is a terrible tragedy that we have here in the city, folks. We need to do recalls on all of them, just like San Fernando, the San Fernando City. It's high time that we need to need people that are fiscal responsible and not stop this charade of spending and wasting our money because this is going to backfire a great deal. How much longer are we going to take this? How much longer? When we have people who need services out there to have their trees trimmed and the streets paved and really have it done right? You people just continue to throw away the money here, the grand project, and you just don't do a thing. You just don't care. I don't know how you can live with yourselves. How can you? This is a disgrace. Now hospitals are disgraced too. How can you? This is a disgrace. Now hospitals are disgraced, too. Thank you.
Donna Peerman?
It's a terrible thing, and you try to put all this money over to the Grand Avenue project, and you're always talking about everyone having to sacrifice, and yet this money, because the city is broke, but the money seems to go freely for this huge development over there, as I believe was started by the CRA, to make a huge place where rich people can have fancy office buildings. And I still don't even really believe in the fountain, neither. You know, we have got to stop spending huge amounts of money to please the developers. I mean, it seems to me the city council, the members of the politicians, every once in a while, they'll listen to, you know, when someone has a hard luck story, and I'm glad about that. But it seems like to me that you're listening more to the plight of the developers and having huge amounts, big buildings. And those big buildings will probably come down in earthquakes, so we need to, I really would love to see them stop saying, hey, let's have small houses, spend money to have small houses for people for living and stopping huge, big office buildings for the rich developer who are probably not going to give us anything. So I'm against it.
Okay, I'm going to ask, just so that we might educate you a tad, the clerk to read what this will actually do. So if you could read that, Mr. Clerk?
Very good, sir. Before, council is a communication from the chief legislative analyst relative to a third amendment to the Grand Avenue Project Disposition and Development Agreement. And the recommendations are as follows. Find that the prescribed changes in the scope of development of the project as presented in the third amendment to the disposition and development agreement are consistent with the scope of the previously certified final environmental impact report and addendum, and instruct the Department of City planning to file a notice of determination within five days of this action. Recommendation two, to approve the DDA third amendment among the Los Angeles Grand, excuse me, among the Los Angeles Grand Avenue Authority, the Board Collection, the Grand Avenue M Housing Partners in substantial conformance with attachment two of the CLA transmital dated December 5, 2012. Contained in that action, it will revise the scope of development for phase two of the project, provide for the grant and loan, loan of authority funds to the Grand Avenue Housing Partners for affordable housing, and delineate the terms and conditions for development and lease of parcel M2.
Thank you. Mr. Labange?
I'm going to pass to Mr. Krikorian.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to ask the CLA to come forward briefly. Appreciate the clerk's reading of the agenda description, and I would just like to ask Mr. Miller to explain for the benefit of the public, is, does this agenda item cost the city any money at all?
No, in fact, we're receiving 5.9 million in the loan repayment for the Housing Department.
Okay, so in ordinary language, what is the function of this item that's before us today? What is the process that we're voting on right now?
These are changes to the disposition and development agreement that allows for a rephasing of some of the developments that the Grand Avenue is developing, and part of that would be the repayment of the 5.99 million dollar loan for housing purposes. So we're receiving 5.9 million, and these are basically technical changes and doing some rephasing in their development. There's no city money involved at all.
So the Housing Department of the City of Los Angeles is receiving 5.9 million dollars in connection with an affordable housing provision within the project?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Labange, we do want to...
I know you do, but I just wanted to thank those who built this park and welcome anybody who's here or anybody who listens to us to come to the central city and walk through this Grand Avenue Park and especially enjoy the beauty of what this created in the center of our city for all. No fences, walk and enjoy the park.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on this item. Could you open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that'll be forthwith, Mr. Clerk. And now, we should adjourn the special meeting and return to our regular meeting. Okay, now, at this time, I'm going to do item eight. Okay, all right, go right ahead.
Item eight is a communication from the city clerk and resolution relative to support from the, excuse me, from the Los Angeles County Registrar and Recorder for the 2013 municipal elections.
Okay, Rick Nightingale, Dow House, Rick passes, Dow House Dude, Donna Peerman, John Walsh. Mr. Dude? I was stuck together, so Marion, you'll be the last one up. Mr. Walsh?
For the students here, this has to do with how much money they're going to spend on putting on in an election. Now, this is fine. Now, I just want students here, ask your parents or your grandparents, if somebody like me in countries you might have come from got up and spoke like this in front of a city council in Central America or in Mexico, I would be taken out and shot to death. There are very few countries in the world that allow what I do. Switzerland, where one of my relatives comes from, Denmark and other countries. The elections generally here are not crooked, as they are in most other countries. Sometimes, they stole the election for Bush, but that wasn't the city that did it. So they are doing a good job here, and what this says is they don't need any more money. And remember, tell your parents and tell everybody, anybody but Garcetti for mayor.
Okay, stay on the subject. Mr. Dude?
Yeah, yeah, he's right. Freedom of speech. In Mexico, they would have kicked my ass several times.
Come on, we have children here, Mr. Dude.
Oh, I'm sorry. They would have really done something terrible. I know that, but see, here, I'm able to tell you that, yeah, I'm running for election, but I still don't know when or how. I want to be councilman of Venice Beach, because that's where I'm appreciated. I can look as crazy as I want to over there, and I just blend in. So we need places like Venice, you know, where people can actually be free, because...
Mr. President, this is not related to this item?
Okay, we gave you a little latitude. Now, go back to the item, Mr. Dude.
Well, I pass.
Okay, thank you. Donna Peerman, followed by Marion Fogler.
Got a little courage now. I was a little nervous there. Anyway, we had the 2013 municipal elections. They are very important, because that's where we're voting for mayor. I want Eric Garcetti for mayor.
Okay, stay on the subject.
Anyway, so this is very important. So I don't like the elections that, of course, they're going to be asking for people, asking for taxes and more money. Those are the ones I don't like, but I do like to see when I get our new council members. So I'm hoping you do these elections in a manner that will cost the least amount of money and one that's done fairly and one where they bring back, so we know exactly, get the right numbers and exactly who won the council seat, so it won't have another presidential fiasco. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler.
I got a notice from the county about charging money for clean water. Go to LACountyCleanWater.org, read the facts. You know, these people don't know what they're doing on these elections, because a lot, excuse me, Krikorian, can you please, Labange, can I have your attention, please? Excuse me.
No, just, Ms. Fogler, just speak on the subject. Just speak on the subject.
I give the same respect that I like to give, I'd like to give the same respect, too.
Just speak on the subject. I'm looking right at you.
Okay. They're not, they were talking.
I'm looking right at you.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, what I'm saying is, this is very important, that we don't just pass parcel taxes and have them unlimitedly being passed here with just a 55% vote that Sacramento is trying to conjure up to change to, from 2/3 to 55%.
Stay on the subject. This has nothing to do, this has nothing to do with the state's discussions. It has to do with our city election.
See, to the city, the municipal elections has a bearing on the 55% than the 2/3s, because that's what they want to change it to. And they don't want me to be heard. That's why he shut my mouth.
She is not talking about this item.
Marion, I'd love to hear you speak, but you have to stay on the subject.
You could pass taxes on us. That's what you're doing.
That's not what this item is about.
What is the item about, then?
It's not about taxes.
The cost of the election, is that what you're talking about?
Well, if you want to talk about that, I'll let you talk about that.
Okay, I like to talk about that.
Go right ahead.
The fact is, is that having councilpeople like Cardenas running for Congress, why couldn't he run out his term to run for Congress then?
Thank you, thank you. Okay. No, thank you very much. Okay, members, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now, I'm going to call, excuse me, we're going to jump back to general public comment. I'm going to call Candido, who's been waiting patiently, and Kevin Rotis. Which, who are your, why don't you tell me who you, no, but wait, no, 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 no. I'm doing, I'm doing two, and then I'm going to go back to another item. Now, if you want to go last, I'll bring you all up together.
We prefer to come up, but when...
Okay, all right. Now, I'll call you later, Candido. Kevin, is Kevin here? Kevin Rotis? Okay, then what we'll do, let's go back to the regular agenda items. Mr. Labange, are you ready with item nine? Yes, Mr. Englander?
For forthwith, please.
Forthwith.
Hold on.
Yeah, why don't you let Mr. Labange set it up for you?
Good morning, everybody. And again, I want to welcome Robert Scott, who has been a champion for the Southern California area, especially in Los Angeles, but most recently with the San Fernando Valley Council of Governments, which many of us who have Valley seats sit on that. Bob, we're going to hear about our transportation summit, and I know we have some IT. Is the IT ready? Is the IT ready? Where's our IT person?
It's my understanding that they were unable to get that, that...
So what we're going to do then is transform, and Bob, take it away right there. Thank you very much.
Okay, we were going to show you a video that was very well received, and we may still get it before we're done, but in any event, I've been given a short time period here. Let me just say, you can go to sfv cog.org and see the video. It's right there. It's got a large picture of Councilmember Zine out there. That's how you can spot it.
He's right here with you.
And we have passed out the program from the event, and it's got a lot of detail in there about who was there, what was supposed to happen, who presented. The only thing I can tell you is, this organization was created by this city council in the beginning about seven years ago. Councilmember Cardenas was there and involved in this. Councilmember Alacon was around and involved in helping us get some of this started. I wanted you to know that Councilmember Labange and Councilmember Zine made some large contributions, which were included in the program here. In any event, the idea of the San Fernando Valley COG, and this is the first time we've been back to see you, is we incorporate, and there's a map in this document as well, it shows it, not only the City of Los Angeles, but the cities of Glendale, Burbank, San Fernando, and Santa Clarita. And so it's very interesting, we've taken on a position of trying to create a mobility matrix for everything north of Mulholland Drive, and in particular, to watch out for Tom Labange's pinch points, a number of other areas that people are concerned about making things work better in this region, and that's what the mobility matrix is about. It's a four-dimensional document, because it talks about everything from going higher, lower, down beneath, and it also goes back in time to look at mistakes we've made and hopefully not making those mistakes in the future. The Mobility Summit was a huge success. We, last year, had about 300. This year, I think we exceeded that to about 350. Financially, it was a great success, so we're doing really well for the COG in that regard. This year, we were recognized by SCAG and recognized by Metro as official subregion, which means that we're in line now for grant funds and for planning funds. One of the areas we'd like to improve upon is our relationship with the Department of City Planning, with the City of Los Angeles. We haven't quite been as engaged as we'd like to be, and so hopefully your offices would help us with that. As I look around the horseshoe here, I see what looks mostly like our board, because seven of our early city council members are on our board, two county supervisors, and four mayors and council members from the cities. So in any event, we're looking at the 101 corridor, we're looking at improving the orange line to the gold line, and transportation planning, regional planning is important to us.
And all the members, and Mr. Garcetti, I thank your interest in this as well. We're going to ask Mr. Rosendahl that we have this in committee with the IT to give a little extra oomph to it in the new year. Mr. Scott, thank you very much, and everyone, and also the council members and their deputies who participated in the Valley Mobility Summit 2012. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sfve cog.org, the video is there. So unfortunately, we couldn't get it going today.
Thank you. Okay, now, I have other speakers, Rick Nightingale, Mr. Dude, and John Walsh. Rick passes. Come on, Mr. Dude.
The Russians are coming.
Stay on the subject.
Is this public comment?
No, you're on item nine.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Okay, then, Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S.org. Okay, mobility for the students, that means transportation. And you heard, I couldn't believe, I've been around here for a long time, Mr. Cardenas said, and he's going to Congress, that his son, 17-year-old son's life is in danger when he exercises mobility, when he uses a bus in the city. Life in danger, and he's very right, especially at night. They don't give a damn, because, darn, because they don't ride, take the buses. And I want you all to know, and there are corrupt subway contractors that get the money. Mobility, in the last six years, the city and MTA has cut 1 million hours. Go to the Bus Riders Union's website. 1 million hours of bus service, 1 million hours. That's why your mother and your grandmother and your great-grandparents have to sit there and wait and wait and wait for the bus. But there is one person up there that was on the MTA board and voted for 1 million hours of cut. That's Jose Weezer. Because remember, it's just like in Mexico. Just because you're Mexican, that doesn't mean you're going to treat your own people good. They're going to treat you like trash. And I'm going to finish by saying, Mr. Cardenas, if your son was in danger on the buses, then you can blame Mr. Weezer, who sat there for seven years on it. HollywoodHighlands.org. See you then, public comment, when I won't be muddled, muffled.
Okay, no more speakers on the queue, no more public comment cards. Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, let's go to item 10. And we have Rick Nightingale, Mr. Dude, and Mr. Walsh. I've been informed that you're out of time on this, but you do have your time for your general public comment. So if I could get Mr. Nightingale, and this is item 10, Rick, and item 10, Juan.
Please, come on. Yeah, this is on that final map that they were bringing up before, that it's been going on for, I don't know how many months. But there goes another thing, like I says, I wanted to talk to Mitch Engler, and he won't accept me to turn around and talk to him about things like this from my area. I have a list, and it keeps getting longer. longer, and, um, I've tried for six months, and he, he won't, uh...
Mr. President, he is not talking about this final map.
But let's go with the map.
No, but Rick, Rick, I'm looking, you have to speak to the specific properties.
So long, and why do they keep wanting to change it all the time?
But see, all we can do is talk to you about three items, item A, which is in Mr. Labange's district, and, uh, B is in Mr. Weezer's district, and C is in my district, so you have to speak to those three items.
Very good, why is it that we keep, I know you people had a big battle regarding your areas, why does this keep going on?
On item 10, if, Clerk, if you could, on item 10, yes, go on.
Why is, I don't understand that, this thing ought to be settled, I'll just stop right there, but I don't know why this map, if you people keep arguing about it, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Dude?
Um, item 10A, final map track, I don't know, I don't, I don't, item 10A, final map.
Mr. President, he is not talking about anything.
Well, I'm trying to read, but that guy's head is on the way. See that guy standing there?
Okay, let's speak to the items.
Uh, it has to do with mapping, uh, and mobility and all that, right?
No, this has nothing to do with mobility.
Well, the San Fernando Valley has no mobility.
No, 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 you gotta stay on this subject, Mr. Dude, if you don't know what this subject is about, then you should return to your seat.
Well, I don't think...
Because I'm not gonna let you speak on this if you don't speak to the specific items, so I'm gonna give you one more chance.
All right, uh, I don't really think that you are actually know what you're talking about.
Trust me, there are numerous days I don't know what I'm talking about. Okay, let's, uh, members, prepare to vote on this, this item, if we could open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Alrighty then, that brings us, uh, to general public, uh, comment, uh, Candido? Can you bring up your, your folk in order?
Thank you, and if you hold our time, Mr. President, we'd appreciate it, this is a very important, uh, issue, and, uh, it's something that concerns all of us throughout the city of Los. Uh, where's our hero, Ms. Benavides, would you please come forward? We want to introduce you to someone very, very special, uh, over here, Ms. Benavides, and where's your granddaughter, with her granddaughter?
Great.
And where are my, uh, people from right back here, and everyone, please, come on up, come on up. Thank you for holding our time, Mr. President. Good morning, Mr. President, Candido Maris, and as you have declared me, Mr. Weston, a constituent of the city of Los Angeles, and I thank you for that. We're here today because we want to honor a woman in, in our community who is a hero, and also, I want to express to Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Cardenas, you and I have been at opposite ends on many issues, but on the one issue that your heart and soul is in, it's with children, and the things that you're trying to prevent, uh, for your child have happened to mine, and we have to protect our children, and it's people like Ms. Benavides, who are out there doing that. This woman, going back as far as we can remember, was out in our community when Delano Park was not there, and it was a dump, and she would clean it up, and she'd make enough space for people to clean, the kids to play, uh, she was always selling tacos and burritos, whatever it took to raise the money so that the kids could have, uh, uniforms, and, and the, the things that they needed to, uh, to have activities there. So, I wanted you, I want you to hear, uh, from some of the students, and, uh, two of our speakers, would you please speak forward, introduce yourself, and again, Mr. President, thank you for the time.
Thank you. And is this Jocelyn?
Good morning, city council members, my name is Jocelyn Espinoza.
And my name is Kevin Rotis, we were previously here on October 5th, and we represent the San Elizabeth School Student Council. We are here today because we believe that Monica Benavides's name should be used in the Delano Park in honor of her. She worked in Delano Park for about 27 years, and became a member of the PTA there, she was also a part of the daycare center located in the park, and she was also a recreational assistant.
She's a very intelligent person, she has been extremely independent since she was a child, she went above and beyond her job at Delano Park, and she's very well-known in the Van Nuys community for her wonderful works. She was a catechist teacher at San Elizabeth School for quite some time, she has three of her grandchildren, Jonathan, Monique, and Victor, currently attending San Elizabeth School. Monica has many great qualities, and we think that her name should be honored in Delano Park. We also got 1,350 signatures for her petition.
1,350 signatures.
Okay, now, let me make sure I understand what you got going on here, now, we've got Jocelyn, and now, and Kevin, or is this John?
No, I'm Kevin.
Okay.
John will speak, uh, next.
Because we're running out of time, Kevin.
We got two minutes, please. I would hope that you would allow us two minutes.
I'm gonna, yeah, but let's get it going.
We're trying, Mr. President, and I'm not being disrespectful, but this woman has given so...
No, I agree, so I'm just saying, let's get it going, I'm gonna, I'm gonna work with you here. Go on, Kevin.
I would like to thank you all for this opportunity, and have a great day.
All right, John Camaro, where are you at, you're representing, please step forward.
Good morning, council member.
Is this John? John?
Yes, I am John Camaro, the faithful navigator of the San Fernando Valley. I too am here to honor Ms. Benavides, who serves her community, church, and country. I am asking you to allow this community to honor a hero, who has done more for this area than anyone else, thank you.
Now, thank you, okay, Candido, my friend, who's next?
Well, with that, we're gonna conclude, uh, but Mr. Cardenas, where are you at, Mr. Cardenas, is, he's still here, or did he?
He might have just stepped out for a minute, but he can hear you, he can hear you, Candido.
All right, Mr. Cardenas, we hope that you'll take a picture with the, uh, with the folks here, uh, the family, and, uh, first, if I may, Ms. Benavides, if she can just say a quick, Ms. Benavides?
We'd love to hear from her.
Councilman, would you, Councilman, would you please join us, yes, with this?
Please say a few words, Miss, and thank you for everything you do.
I want to thank everybody, and I was very glad to help everybody in the community. I always liked to work with children, and I helped at the schools, and different voice clubs, and, and the park, for many years, thank you.
Now, thank you, and God bless you, if we had more people like you, this world would be a better place. Thank you, Candido.
Mr. President, we have the, the, uh, may we have the signatures to present to you, or should we present to the council?
I'll, I'll, I'll give it to the council.
All right, let me give this, all right, sir, and...
Well, what, what we can do is, what council office is it in?
It's the 6th district.
Okay, then what Mr. Cardenas will do is forward it to the Wreckin' Park Department, so that they can review it, the commission, the Wreckin' Park Commission.
Wonderful, thank you, sir.
Thank you, let's give her another round of applause. All right, and good luck to you in the future, young people. Okay, Mr. Dude, Linda Romney, Donna Peerman, Mr. Dude, just come right on up.
All right, uh, now I know what I'm talking about, um...
Well, we will see.
Well, the Russians are coming, the Chinese are coming, the Italians are coming, well, everybody, everybody...
The Italians are here, Joe Busciano, there he is.
What I'm talking about is this rich, greedy, are you a multi-billionaire? No, you're not, I'm talking about the billionaires coming, and taking over your greedy system. You see, they are buying out places where they can live off of the people here, and take the money to their countries, although I don't think we should have any boundaries in the world anymore, we should all just call each other human beings, there are some human beings that are smarter than you are, and they're gonna come and take over your country. It's not your country, you fools.
Uh, come on now, be respectful.
Well, I mean, he said, all right...
I mean, nobody on this council's ever called you that, we see you on a regular basis, and I do believe we treat you with respect, Mr. Dude.
No, we live in a ship of fools, and that's what I'm referring to, somebody already called us fools a long time ago, and it's because of the way we behave, we restrict each other from having a place to live, from having, uh, parking meters? Who needs parking meters? You do, the people don't need them. We need a free society, I really, every time I say something about what I'm trying to do, they call me a communist, see, the communists are coming and taking over your country. So, what are you talking about, you don't even know, what I'm talking about is, what I'm trying to implement has nothing to do with community.
Thank you, Mr. Dude. Linda Romney, followed by Donna Peerman, followed by Marian Fogler, Ms. Romney, welcome.
Thank you, good afternoon, I respectfully request that the general comments occur before the other business of this council, uh, I have waited, uh, over two hours...
Let's hold her time for a second, Ms. Romney, what we did, just so you know for the future, we have taken general, uh, public con, uh, comment, and it now comes at the end.
Yes.
Depending on if I can get some up early, I do that, but it just seems to work better for us, so, I mean, I, I respect, and there are people who feel the, the way that you do, but at this point, it would appear that this is working better for us, but it is something that, this is how we place it on the agenda, but please go on and continue, uh, your comments and concerns.
Uh, I also would request for the video conferencing to be reinstalled, the San Fernando Valley, uh, as you know, uh, financially supports the rest of the city of Los Angeles, yet as representative government, we have no say, in our two minutes, your senior citizens and your disabled cannot go down to Los Angeles, uh, and to continue, um, I appear at the Department of Water and Power Commissioner meetings, uh, that's held, uh, two times, uh, every month, I've been doing this for years, and I want to, uh, express my, uh, concern for using the ratepayers' money for the development of the La Crete's campus, the purchase of the property alone by the Department of Water and Power was 11.25 million dollars for the purchase of 1.4 acres, in addition, on Tuesday, the council, uh, okayed, uh, several items, uh, that totaled, um, uh, 39 million dollars in, in total for projects 22 to 25 on the agenda, and this is on Tuesday's agenda. The fact of the matter is, is that, uh, there has been an imposition on the, on indigent seniors and the disabled, the $50 rate increase for the sanitation as of July of last year, combined with the 11% for electricity, that was voted on by everyone in this, this council other than four reps, and that was Councilperson Perry, uh, um, Parks, um, our Councilperson, Englander, and, and Zine. We cannot continue to, to take the ratepayers' money and spend it for development, in fact, sir, had this money not been spent, there would not have been any rate increase.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Romney, Donna Peerman, Marian Fogler, and Rick, you might want to start making your way over, go on, Ms. Peerman.
Yeah, I'm Donna Peerman, I totally agree that with, uh, DWP shouldn't be spending all that money on developers, in fact, I think the city councils are spending way too much money on developers, and it's, uh, what I think is funny is that you're going on a big thing about how great Canoka Park is, how great Reseda is, and yet, you don't really seem to care about the valley, because only four, uh, council members voted to keep the video conferencing open, Eric Garcetti, uh, Alarcon, uh, I'm starting to be listing him, and, uh, Bernie Parks, and Busciano. So, so it shows that, uh, the people that should be thinking about the valley, that are living in the valley other than Alarcon, like, uh, Kokorian and Dennis Zine, uh, they'd, and Cardenas, they didn't seem to care enough to keep it here. I really believe that we could have it where more, more people seem to know about, uh, speaking in the valley, and going up with the neighborhood councils, and really letting them know that this was open, that there was probably a lot more people over there that would be concerned on speaking over there, because it was been very, it's been very difficult for me to go downtown all the time, and if I just wanted to speak on a whim, I can't seem to go down there, I gotta get all my cars ready, and know exactly when I want to speak at, because I'm having trouble over there, because, uh, and then if I don't, then, I'm tough out of luck, I can't speak, also, don't like the fact that, uh, they, they seem to be having, uh, to be harder on me, they seem to telling me to stop speaking, but I see other people around in the building, uh, around this place speaking. And right now, I'm in, uh, thanks a lot, I'm in a lot of pain, my back and my hip hurt, and now I can't even walk, I guess you want to make me just, fully physically disabled, well, you made me physically disabled now, make me go downtown.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Fogler, followed by Rick Nightingale, followed by John Walsh.
I don't know, but you people are destroying our, our Brown Act here, and I know you're dismantling it, and you, by doing this, taking away our video conferencing for the valley, San Fernando Valley, Howard Jarvis, Paul Dan, you people just don't care, you wanna, uh, take over and just, just destroy our, destroy everything that we built up here, I don't know what the heck you're gonna, you're doing to the disabled, my back hurts bad, and my feet hurt from going all the way down there, you know, going all the way down there, it's excruciating pain for me to have to go downtown, and I'm so tired, and I'm wiped out, it's a whole day journey for me, I think this is an outrage, what you're doing to us, and I wish that people would be doing something to, you know, Cardenas, who runs for Congress while he's in city council, he didn't do anything for the 6th district, and he's not gonna do anything now, and he's not gonna do, he's not gonna have any meetings, because that's what, uh, Howard Berman did, he didn't have any meetings for 30 years, so we're gonna be stuck with him for another 30 years, who knows, I probably die before he, he gets termed out, before somebody beats him, you know?
You know Howard Berman lost.
Well, you know what, he was my council congressman until he was, uh, pushed out by, uh, you know, the gerrymandered for, uh, Tony Cardenas to get that seat, okay? That's wrong, to make us spend money so that he can run for another office, I think this is an outrage, you politicians, that law needs to be changed, first and then, secondly, we don't want to change the law from, from two-thirds to 55%, so you people can pass anything tax you want on us, and I'm against the, uh, clean water thing if it's not gonna be spent correctly, what an outrage you are mistreating us.
Thank you, thank you, and as Rick comes forward, I think that Mr. Cardenas had a lot of folk here that liked the way he operates, so, uh, Rick, it's on you, followed by, uh, John Walsh, followed by Dr. Weissman.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale, well, all you people that voted and all that stuff, it's all up to you, I mean, it's, this is your bag, you voted for him, and it all went down, so live with it, I mean, that's the way it is, same as when it came along here regarding, uh, Richard Riordan came in here, you whole council put him down, didn't show him any respect of what he deserved the other day, it's the only way you could get this pension, I've been bitching about it for so long, to get out of the pension program and put him on a 401K like any other normal person that don't work for the government is on, but no, you just keep pushing it, he turned around, I wish he would have advertised more for help, because I would have helped him, there's no doubt, there's a lot of people would have helped him get the signatures, we didn't know where to sign, because that's the only way this city's gonna get out of the hole that they're in, is get rid of the, of the pension program, you are not bankers, and wait till this situation comes down, and the stock market takes another dump, we're gonna come up with another billion dollars to bail them out, because it's gonna dump, it's only a matter of time, the president, to what he wants to do, and the way you people are, are doing business, it's gonna dump, and it's gonna dump hard, so you better people be holding on to your pennies, because it's, it's gonna be a real good ride, and I'd like to see what you people are gonna do, because right now, it ain't gonna last, and I don't know what these other people are gonna do, because they're gonna be out in the streets, there's no doubt, like that other gentleman here thinks everybody deserves a ride, no, you don't deserve a ride, we all worked hard, I worked hard, I invested my money when I was younger, I sacrificed, and I'm doing pretty well now, but how many people do that? They all want to drive new cars, and buy a home after a home after a home, and then they lose it because they can't pay for it. they lose it because they can't pay for it. And what do you people do? You don't even show them the respect that they need because you keep spending more money. It's just the American way, just put it on your credit card. Look at the government up there, $266 billion in a hole. You think you're gonna bail out? You're crazy.
Thank you, Mr. Nightingale. Dr. Weiss, John Walsh, and then Dr. Weissman to close. Mr. Walsh.
Blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, please go, every one of you, to signon.org/Sign. Mayor Viergoza, our mayor shocked the entire United States by becoming a member of a steering committee of a far-right organization called Fix the Debt, hooked in with Pete Peterson, whose sole job is to take our social security away. A person, an LA person by the name of Coombs, Ms. Coombs, has a petition online through MoveOn.org. In the past 48 hours, the number of signatures on this petition throughout the United States is 12,900 in 48 hours. You must go now, everybody who's listening to me, and sign the petition. In fact, every, this right-wing organization is giving Antonio a $30,000 expense account. The press won't talk. That's what he's getting, he's being paid. And I'd like to read one of these comments. This comment is right now, go to signon.org, number 12,771, from Mario Chacon, San Diego. Antonio, as your child and friend and college buddy, I am baffled by your role in this shameful committee. It is retrogressive and political suicide, my friend. Lest I remind you of your progressive roots and keen awareness of the economic imbalance at this time in our history. Where is your corazón and where is your concienza? And then he ends in Spanish, te bobaliste un sin vergüenza de lo peor. What I'm saying now is I'm asking every single one of you up here, especially the big phony, Mr. Rosendahl, to sign this petition condemning the mayor of this city, and if you don't do it, you are 100% attempting behind him to take our pensions away, not our pensions, our social security.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Thank you. Calm down, calm down. Okay, Mr. Dr. Weissman?
Good morning, sir. Good morning, all of council. As usual, certainly we thank you for coming to ban eyes to our humble city here, and I have lots of things to tell you. I missed you, I hope you missed me. Today is the 71st anniversary of the day that lives in infamy, the Pearl Harbor attack. I don't know that if you took consideration that earlier, but let's remind ourselves that that was the 911 of our era. I was there, I remember how it affected me. I remember those somber words by President Roosevelt. Next, we have a series of events going on. The Government Relations Committee had a meeting this morning, the Rules Committee had a meeting this morning, I'm sorry, I wasn't there for it, Mr. Weston. The LA Neighborhood Council Coalition has taken a position on the sales tax and on the other issues. We have a lot to talk about. I'll not go into the details at this point. The budget advocates, of which I'm pleased to be a member, have started their process, and we're already beginning to look at the controllers' audits and the other revenue and expense accounts and doing what we can to help you decrease and eliminate, to the extent possible, the budget deficit. It's gonna take a lot of work from all of us, we don't have to agree on it, but we sure have to work on it, and I hope you'll engage the budget advocates in that process. Mr. Krikorian, thank you so much for the offer that the budget advocates will have to be formally in front of this august body, because we are the first neighborhood council group that has had that privilege, and we respect it and we're pleased about it. Recently, the coalition voted that additional opportunities be afforded to neighborhood council people. You've heard several good arguments for that this morning. We also would hope that you will reopen this as a place for public comment, because it is difficult to get that.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Weissman. Okay, Mr. Clerk, where are we?
Mr. President, council has motions for post and referral.
Okay, they're posted and referred, next?
The desk is clear.
Okay, announcements? Announcements, Bill?
Yes, Mr. President, the 14th Annual Westchester Holiday Parade is this Sunday, December the 9th, at 2:00 PM in Westchester. The parade starts at the corner of Loyola Boulevard and Manchester. Come out to Westchester this Sunday at 2:00, enjoy the 14th Annual Westchester Holiday Parade. It'll feature Santa Claus and a lot of other wonderful people. Experience community fun, music, food, and raffle prizes, a lovely tradition in Westchester. This Sunday, the 14th Annual Westchester Holiday Parade, 2:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Was it Mr. Buscaino that had that announcement? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just like to congratulate our Narbon Gaucho's varsity football team for their second consecutive LA City section title, that they won last Friday night. They beat the Crenshaw Cougars 25-0, capped in a perfect season with the record of 14 wins and zero losses. And tonight, I'm sorry, tomorrow night, they'll be taking on the Corona Sentinel, and this game is the inaugural CIF State Regional Open Division Championship Bowl Game. If the Gauchos win tomorrow night, they'll move on to the CIF State Championship Open Division Bowl Game, December 15th at Home Depot. So we just want to, the Home Depot Center, we want to congratulate the Gauchos.
And wish them luck.
And wish them luck. Yes, thank you.
Mr. Englander, announcements?
Yeah, this Sunday is the Chatsworth Kiwanis Holiday Parade, which is gonna be on Devonshire, starting in front of Los Toros Mexican Restaurant, which is a great place in the San Fernando Valley, and it starts at 1:00. And I'll be there as well. We have, it's a great turnout, it's good for the family, and it's a great community event. We urge everybody to participate and show up. And then, lastly, as we adjourn, not in an adjourning motion, but as we recognize our fellow council member, Tony Cardenas, as his last time officially in these chambers, and retire his number officially, or plaque. I think we all pitched in and got him a gift, and so wanted to give you a gift. And say, dude, stuffed, how you know, what are you gonna do? The microphone has to stay here.
And we paid a pretty penny for it, Mr. Cardenas. Okay, Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to let everyone in the council family know, as well as the CD2 family know, my former chief of staff, Adrien Nazarian, this week was sworn in as our most recent member of the California State Assembly, so we're very proud of him for that. But it was a very big week in the Nazarian family, because yesterday, Adrien and his wife had a new baby as well. David Begodam Nazarian was born at 11:00 yesterday morning, so I just wanted to let everyone know that.
Great. Mr. Labange?
Want to know Mitch Englander will be performing tonight at the Holiday Inn in the lounge for stand-up comic. Thank you, Mitch. Give Mitch a big hand for all that. I will do that. Members, tonight in Toluca Lake, in the beautiful southeast San Fernando Valley, we have open house along with the Chamber of Commerce, Toluca Lake Chamber of Commerce, it's a great street to walk and stroll, you could cross the border into Burbank and go to Bob's Big Boy, where Dennis Zine will be underneath that big hot rod of his, making sure it's as clean as a whistle.
Okay, any other, oh, Mr. Zine, announcements?
Sergeant Zine and his senior leads will be out there protecting the people in Toluca Lake. He notified me this morning, so he'll be safe and secure in Toluca with Sergeant Zine out there, not me, the real Sergeant Zine. Sunday, to all the Jewish community, Southern California largest Hanukkah celebration, Universal City Walk, it is a huge, huge turnout, 7:00 at Universal City Walk, and the public is invited to come out and celebrate the beginning of Hanukkah. Thank you.
Adjourning motions, or Mr. Garcetti, an announcement? Adjourning motions, Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, both adjourning motions.
Oh, if everyone could please rise, everybody in the chambers, please rise for adjourning motions. Okay, go right ahead, Mr. Garcetti.
Mr. President, of course, we adjourn today and commemorate Pearl Harbor Day, 71 years ago today, in which many lives, civilians, 48 to 68, were killed, many military personnel as well, on that infamous day. And so we remember Pearl Harbor Day 71 days, 71 years later. I also ask that we adjourn in memory of one of my favorite musicians in the world who died at 92, David Brubeck. I would say we should take five to commemorate him, but he was a man who was one of the greatest pianists and one of the greatest musicians we've had, a man who was born here in California on a ranch upstate and studied music, became one of the greatest musicians, and he really challenged the traditional songs that are 4-4 and 3-4, was known for his 5-4, 12-8 songs, things like "Lurando alla Turk" and "Waltz for Debbie," things that really moved folks. And he played the Hollywood Bowl so many times, Mr. Labange, and came there with the David Brubeck Quartet. The first jazz record to ever sell 1 million copies was Take Five, and so on Wednesday, a great pianist passed, and we remember David Brubeck.
Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, today I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Pete Peter James Scrumbus, who passed away on November 29th from cancer. Pete was born in Los Angeles on January 4th, 1933, the son of Greek immigrants Nicoletta and Dimitri Scrumbrus. He graduated from USC in 1955 and was later married to Adrian Hurantus in 1961. Pete was an esteemed colleague and well-loved history teacher at Westchester High School. After retiring in 1987, he and Adrian became co-owners of the Sandwich Saloon in San Pedro. Peter lived a life rich with an abundance of a large family and many friends. His passions included golf, politics, the racetrack, opera, and classical music, and of course, his USC athletics. Pete is survived by his wife Adrian, four children, Jim, Nikki, Steven, Andy, his eight grandchildren, a number of family members, cousins, nieces, nephews, many friends. Funeral services were held on Wednesday at Green Hills. In lieu of flowers, a family requests that donations be made to St. Jude Children's Research Hospital. May he rest in peace.
Other adjourning motions? Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much. I ask we adjourn in memory of a 37-year-old, wonderful, young, prime-of-her-life school secretary, Iberia Elementary School, Wendy Orlana. She had a six-month battle with cancer, it affected the whole school. We ask we adjourn in him/her memory. Also, I ask we adjourn in memory of Chief Petty Officer Terrill Horn. You may recall, he was the member, Joe, if we could do that together, of, who died in the accident of trying to overtake a drug boat on the Channel Islands, 180 miles northwest in the Pacific Ocean. He was loved by many people, and it was very touching to see his comrades talk about him in their base in Torres, I believe, how, what a wonderful man and what a wonderful leader that he was, and one of the first to go in such a tragic way. I ask that we do adjourn in memory of Chief Petty Officer Terrill Horn.
Okay, Mr. Labange and Mr. Buscaino, why don't we have the clerk prepare a document for a double signature? So for Mr. Buscaino and for Mr. Labange. Back to you, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to add, there's gonna be a memorial service in his honor tomorrow, 1:00 at the Coast Guard Sector, Los Angeles, Long Beach, and San Pedro off Terminal Island. So that's again, tomorrow, 1:00, and tomorrow, Saturday, at 1:00, in honor of Chief Horn. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas?
You're going to that?
Oh, you're good? Any more adjourn? Oh, Mr. Krikorian?
No, no.
No, Mr. Labange has already spoke his quota, I'm gonna let you go first, we go back.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I appreciate Mr. Garcetti recognizing December 7th as Pearl Harbor Day, so that we can all take a moment and pause in memory of both those who were killed on that day and the way that our nation was transformed on that day for all time. In the same respect, I'd like to take a moment to remember that December 7th of 1988 was the day that the Armenian community throughout the world was transformed forever, when that country was devastated by an earthquake that killed 45,000 people and left 500,000 homeless. And so many of our Los Angeles Armenian community was directly impacted by that, by losing loved ones, and many who are living here now are living here now because of that earthquake. And so I just wanted to take a moment and also ask that we adjourn in memory of those who were lost that day and pause to remember that tragedy as well.
That's very appropriate. Mr. Labange?
Yeah, James Ramirez, who was the wife of Robert Lee Ramirez. James was the husband, father, tragically had a heart attack the other day and passed. She is big in the community, in our district, as assistant principal at John Marshall High. To lose her husband is very tragic. Survived by their daughter as well.
Thank you. Other adjourning motions? Okay, members, this council's adjourned.